Okay, so as I foreshadowed, much of the afternoon is really time for you and your tablemates to do some thinking together, all with the goal of ensuring some clarity by the end of our afternoon around your next best steps moving forward. Just to reiterate, we left off before lunch. I want you to center all of your work and your discussions today on your chart paper outcome statements, but also consider which of these levels you're prioritizing. It's fine to prioritize, I think you should. Which are you prioritizing? And at the same time, how might you be thoughtful about which one is not the priority? Because you still need to monitor and plan to measure that as well. So as we enter this conversation, we're going to start off with conversation about fidelity. There are really three key steps I want us to talk about this afternoon. Fidelity, first, always. Second, what are our decision rules as we determine next steps? Let's again think about what we're saying we're doing. We have an action plan. We're trying to execute to get to these goals, but we want to be sure that we are planning for what the evaluation of our work will be. So when I say fidelity first, I'm saying it's time for you to plan for what is the status of your work. Are you getting the results that you desire? The first thing you're going to do is consider the fidelity of the implementation of your action plan. The second thing I want you to have a conversation about is what are your data decision rules? What will be those rules for when you are looking at the data after you've considered fidelity and you're ready to look at outcome data? How will you know if what you're doing is working? When will you know if you need to modify or try something completely different? You want to plan for what that looks like now. Remember, the IDC slide around efficacy in data is all about planning for the data analysis that you'll need to do. And then lastly, how are you going to make sure your progress monitoring system is comprehensive, measuring both system level and student level growth metrics, but also the quality and the alignment of those progress monitoring tools? You want to make sure they're getting you really close to that center target. So what comes to mind when you think about fidelity? Fidelity of implementation is not likely a new concept to you. So what comes to mind when you hear fidelity of implementation? That means what?
Being done the way it was meant to be done.
What would you add to it? How do we know the way it was meant to be done? Whatever that thing is, how do we know? Checks and balances need to be in place? So when we have a goal and we're saying, this is what we're going to do and this is how we're going to measure it, I want you to be thinking about what are those checks and balances? What are the instructions for how it is supposed to be done? Don't take for granted people have the skill set for that. You're saying use this tool, but how are you certain they know the order, the duration, the frequency, the composition? What is supposed to look like? That's what you want to be thinking about when you are considering fidelity, which again is the execution of the action in the way we designed it to be executed. So I'm proposing, and the IDC guide around success gaps tool also supports that the first thing you should do when you are wanting to have a discussion about how well your action plan is going, is to think about fidelity first. Before you analyze any piece of data, stop and ask the question, were things done the way we expected them to be done? If yes, proceed with your analysis, whatever that data piece is or pieces of data are. But if not, pause and determine the best way to strengthen fidelity. So I want you to just take a second, just on your own, like 10, 15 seconds, and think about what you wrote and just think about right now. In an ideal space, how am I measuring the fidelity of what my team and I said on our chart paper? Just to yourself, what are those ways? So in a second, I'm going to give you time to share your ideas with your tablemates. But first, here's an example of, many of you have RTI up. Let's say we're engaging in an MTSS system. Here is an example of a way to monitor whether or not what we said needs to happen and that intervention is happening. So key questions, is the action plan being implemented as designed, meaning with the who? Instructional coach, reading specialist, instructional assistant, classroom teacher, special ed teacher, whatever? Is it being implemented with the indicated frequency, duration, and are we collecting the progress monitoring data that we said we were going to collect on the action plan? And we can just take a sense of yes or no. Like that's not an explain away question. The question is a yes or no. And then we can add qualitative data, but the essence of the question is yes or no. And I'm not suggesting that these are the only appropriate questions. These are just examples. Based on what you have on your chart paper, of course, you might need different examples. But let's say we see some qualitative data in week three and four. So in week three, there's a no at frequency. What's the no mean? It says interventionist, who was supposed to be doing it was absent, and therefore all intervention sessions were not delivered as planned. And then in week four, the intervention is back. So instead of doing the intervention twice a week as indicated on the action plan, it was three times a week. So what does that kind of data tell us? Why is it important to capture that? What does it tell you? What information does it give? Yep. So if you were, let's say we said we're going to collect progress monitoring data once a week. If we looked at that students' data at week three, or all the students, because it appears as if this person is the person doing interventions. Let's say we looked at students' data in week three, we might see a dip. We're like, oh man, it's not working, when in fact, they didn't get the intervention. So that can help us understand the nature of the data. We can go to an ORID protocol and say, what do I think about the data? I'm wondering if the lack of intervention may have contributed to this dip. Then we look at progress in week four and it shoots way up. And we're like, whoa, this is more progress than we've ever seen before. Huh, maybe three is the lucky number instead of two. Right? It just gives you additional data to problem solve around. Now, when you have conversations about fidelity, you want to have conversations not just about how you're going to collect it, but what is your non-negotiable? There are going to be some weeks that are not 100%. Most weeks probably won't be 100% because that's what school looks like. So what's the minimum? Is the minimum 50%? Is it 80? What's meaningful to your goal? How rigorous do you need that intervention to be? When do you want those outcomes to be reached? If you're slow and steady wins the race, what does that mean for the level of fidelity that you will consider as a non-negotiable? You need to make decisions about those baselines and also about the ways in which you will monitor fidelity. So just a second, I'm going to have you call back up your personal thoughts around how to best collect fidelity around what's on your chart paper. And then I want you to go to your reflection document with your tablemates and have conversations about fidelity. What are your current strengths related to assessing intervention fidelity? Most of you have gotten started on actions aligned with your chart paper outcome statements. You're already doing something. So consider what has been the fidelity evaluation of what you are currently doing? What are the strengths there? And then in your conversations also, consider what opportunities there are. How can you strengthen that? Do you have a baseline? If not, what might it be? Are your fidelity structures all self-report? And if so, how do you feel about that? If you can just trust Renee to tell you, yep, I did it, and your data's not moving, then what does that suggest about your approach to assessing fidelity? So I want you to talk about those two things. I'm going to set the clock for 12 minutes. That seems to be about when you all have stopped most of your conversations. So we'll see how that goes. If you need more time, then we'll add it. Remember, this is in your reflections document. All right, let's chat about it. Fidelity, strengths, and opportunities. So I wrote down table names and I'm going to pick two to share out. And then I would like for folks to add on questions as we go. I'm going to turn them over so I'm not biased. Attic team, I just finished talking to them. Fidelity, what are your current strengths? What are your opportunities? I think I like have you all thinking about so much, it's hard to articulate actually what you're talking about. But they did talk about good things. Here you go.
We do have intervention. Yeah, we do. We're doing intervention. But we kind of discussed for our teachers having like a little framework of some high-yield instructional strategies that they can kind of choose from, what it would look like in the classroom, and then kind of holding them accountable to, you know, everybody's going to try this, and then you're going to bring back your samples of what you did, and then we're going to kind of compare and contrast like what worked best, what didn't. Does that make any sense? Or am I just rambling at this point?
No, it's making sense. Let's connect the dots. So remember, their outcome is all about how they're going to structure PLC time, right? They have a huge autonomous district. Everybody's doing what they're doing. Our desire is to create vision, shared practices. So it aligns with, let's identify what some of those shared practices can be that are high-yield instructional strategies. So we're going to teach those, have teachers apply them, use our PLC time to develop that mindset, skill set, tool set. It aligns, right? So when we think about the fidelity, part of that conversation then will be what teachers report in terms of their implementation. But then we also think about what are the other resources that might exist? Are there coaches? Are there administrators in the building that can incorporate a rubric during their observations to identify which high-yield strategies there's noticing in the classroom? So we have teachers' experiences of the implementation of that, but then we actually see it in practice. Both of those components are important. And then if we're using those, we'll be able to use our data from common assessments or some kind of other assessments to measure the impact of those strategies at the student level. So we're addressing both. Now, high-yield instructional strategies, what are you all, so many of us are working on curriculum, what are your resources for identifying high-yield instructional strategies? So if we ask, what are those? What are your go-to resources? Let's help out our Attic team. What are you using? What are the resources that you're sharing with your teachers right now? Best practice in instructional practice. If I'm walking into your classroom, how do I know high-quality instruction? What are the principles of that? So the CEC, high-leverage practices, what's the website? They'll use it. So if you Google CEC, high-leverage practices for special education students, and we know what works for special education students, works, right? So it works. We talked about Marzano as another option. Mindframes, I appreciate, I think that's a great resource to help teachers kind of organize how to think about building instructional practices. What else would you offer as a resource? So I just want you to think, thank you for sharing. Consider, because a lot of us have components of instructional practice on our outcome goals, we're trying to shift practices. What are those? What are they? Are we assuming folks know, or do we have resources to identify them? So for your consideration. So we walked through how fidelity would work as we grow the plan in Attic. We can't really speak to what we're doing now because we're planning, right? But those are some of the big ideas around fidelity we would want to think about. So then, one more, oh, the Bloomington team. This is good because it'll be a behavior one. We just did academic. Strengths around fidelity and opportunities.
We have more opportunities than we just started.
Okay, that's all right.
But something we talked about is when we think about fidelity, what dimension of fidelity are we focusing on, or are there multiple dimensions? So are we talking about quality? Are we talking about adherence? Are we talking about dosage?
Yep.
When we think about dosage, are we talking about planned versus actually received?
Yep.
Things like that. So how will we support our teachers in reporting accurately the different dimensions of fidelity? And then how can we, as a team, go in and support, provide job embedded coaching, technical assistance around those components for both academics and actual behavior interventions? And so we're just working on identifying the dimension that we think is most pertinent to the intervention and then the outcomes associated with that.
That's a great discussion. That discussion is probably going to go on for a while, but it's right on target. So the reason why I showed you just the little chart that people often use, like for, you know, is part of their RTI process, is that they're really trying to get to the multiple dimensions of fidelity in a very surface level way. But still, that's what they're trying to do through that kind of self-report form. Here's what I noticed. Whenever I'm coaching a system or a particular school, especially around their MTSS process, and they'd show me that kind of form, I asked them the work they've done with staff around the mindset around fidelity. I don't know about you, but it's my experience that people do not want that fidelity thing to be anything less than 100. Like they think that's bad. If you were absent, or better yet, if you get called away to put out a fire because that's what really happens, that's not, that's not an accusation about you. It just is. It just is something that happens that can help us understand the profile of the data more. But I think people hold on to like, if it's not 100, then I'm going to get in trouble. They don't understand that there's multiple levels of fidelity that we need to think about and talk about. And knowing which is really difficult to implement at high levels gives us another opportunity to problem solve. So like, we don't want to like, give the illusion that everything is okay. We really need to have conversations about where do we need to make sure that the interventions are happening at the frequency we need, or that we have the right people doing it so that it's high-quality instruction with an expert being able to fluently adjust to whatever the students are doing in the intervention. You got to have conversations to figure that out, but you really, I mean, it's more questions than answers at first, but really important to think about. You want to add?
Yeah.
We also talked about when we, when you do capture multiple dimensions of fidelity, you're able to then problem solve specific to those dimensions. So if we talk about dosage, and we recognize that the dosage of what was planned versus what was actually received, it might not actually be because of the lack of actually implementing something, it's because you reported ACRs or you were absent, or those types of things. And then we can problem solve in more specific ways. And then if it's quality, it can be coaching could be the mechanism that we then provide, and other things like that. So collecting multiple dimensions allows us to be more intentional to support the teachers received rather than him seeing it as kind of.
All or nothing. Yep, exactly. I love it, Bloomington team. That's super. Super conversation. The only other thing I want to add at this point was something that came up yesterday when we were doing this section up north. I think it's also important, especially because a lot of you are thinking about tools that are already a part of your system, like you might be using, I can imagine for many of you that have MTSS or RTI on your, on your outcome charts, you might be using existing programs, et cetera. You really need to be thoughtful about reading the supplements to those programs, like what do they say is the way implementation is supposed to go, right? In terms of group size, in terms of frequency, they usually all tell you, the data that we collected to say that this is an effective intervention is based on doing this in groups of three to five, three times a week for 30 minutes. Like they're going to say things like that. So you want to make sure that your plans match that. Otherwise, you're like, we bought this program, it doesn't even work. Well, maybe it does, but there's misalignment in terms of the, some component of fidelity. So I find, and the reason why I wanted to bring this up is that we plan so much for what the action plan looks like, and we don't begin the conversation thinking about how we're going to monitor fidelity or the important parts of it, that then we get in it and then we don't have the data we need to really adjust, or even have the data to know when we need to adjust. So I'm going to invite you to, at the end of the day, kind of think about what a next step might be for you in terms of fidelity. So any other team that I didn't call on, have something that would be value-added to this conversation. Yeah?
We've been doing a lot of like district leader professional development and things like that. And something that we didn't catch on until a little later down the road in our professional development was, they were coming back to us with like really positive feedback and like seemed like they were really grasping the knowledge, but then they weren't using, our relator found that they weren't really taking it and owning it and moving it back into their buildings. So like, we built in our fidelity checks, even in like our surveys and things like that, to see and like place action steps for them, so they were continuing the work and it was getting outside of just the district leaders. But that was eye-opening to like, once we started putting those checks and balances at the end of our survey, it wasn't just like, wow, this is the best PD we've had. It's what have you done, or what do you plan to do? And checking back in. So I think that's really important because we missed that probably at least 30 months worth, if not more.
Good. That's, I'm so glad you brought that up. Great point. Because oftentimes, we do say, okay, well, we can say like, what's the pre-test? Like what did you know before you came here? What did you know now, post-test? But really, it's the process. Remember, we're looking at process and outcomes. The process data is what they discovered they needed. What does, what does your implementation, how are you taking and applying the content between sessions? And how do we capture that? Because really, that's what we need to know. How's it showing up in your practices outside of our trainings? So kudos to you all for thinking about that and adjusting. All right, so let's say our fidelity is good. We are satisfied with whatever. Oh, I didn't ask about baselines though. What's a baseline? How do you know what's good enough? Did anybody currently have a baseline? You all do? Zero? Right, right. Yeah, this is, that's the real deal. You know, and to this point, you know, let's say we find that the intervention for valid reasons just wasn't implemented in the way it was designed. I find it's the nature of educators to be like, okay, well, let's figure it out. Like, let's do, let's revise, let's do something else. So we're revising, like, we're having conversations about what to do next without pausing to say, really, what was, what are those things? To the point, you got pulled for an ACR, you got pulled to do a myriad of things. How do we control for that instead of just zooming by that? So be sure you're setting some kind of baseline for what is acceptable level, what are acceptable levels of fidelity before you just begin to make decisions on the data, which is the conversation we're going to enter now. So using data for decision-making, right? We know that. We know that this is the next step, and we have likely developed our own skillsets around how to analyze data, how to use the sophisticated data systems in Excel to make our little growth charts and all that. I'm simplifying it. And just thinking about when you're looking at outcome data, either practices of the adults at the system level or interventions that are directly impacting students, when fidelity is acceptable, then, and we're looking at data, what, how do we make these decisions on keep going, change something, modify it, some component of it? Do something completely different or add to it? Develop something new? Or again, consider other supports needed? So if these are the four like big decisions we're making when we are looking at data, keep going, modify, add to, or do something completely different, thinking of other supports, just like I asked you to call up in your mind about fidelity, I want you to call up in your mind how you make decisions, these decisions now. So you would know to continue implementing as you're doing if you saw what? You would know to just keep going if the data told you what? You would consider, oh, so I might need to modify if the data suggested what? When would you consider developing new interventions? And when would you consider going back to the drawing board and saying, we need something new? We need additional supports? So I want you to take a minute, just bullet point, write those down for yourself so that when you're talking to your tablemate, you have reference points. Just take a minute to jot these down yourself, and then I'm going to get you back, and we'll move on into small groups. But I want you to just think of this on your own for now. What would the data tell you? What would it look like if you wanted to keep going versus modify versus develop new interventions versus figure out additional supports? Again, system level for the adults, but also for students. All right, just 10 more seconds, and then we're going to chat about it. All right. So who has the answer? Or you, what's your thinking around continuing the intervention? What would the data suggest if you said, oh, just let's keep going? What would it look like broadly speaking? What would your data look like if you decided, let's just keep going? Steady growth. What would our data look like if we wanted to consider modifying? Slower than expected. Inconsistent. Peaks and valleys. When would we say we need to do something different? Flat, flat line. Or even a decline, right? Not working. And when do you say, hmm, we might need something else? Yep. And usually, we know that because we've tried that modification. We've tried to develop something else, and still, our data is not moving in the direction we'd like. So we need to drill down deeper to think about some other supports. That's, that's kind of how I want you to think about this. So all that you articulated is what is captured here, just for reference, right? Now this, if I'm working with you individually, this is going to be much more sophisticated. But these are the bullet points we just made, right? Continue if your data is showing progress at or above what you expect. Modify if that data is not on track to get to the goal that you desire. You have to be clear on that goal. Develop new things if you're showing a lack of response or a decline. And then usually, we'll consider other supports when we've tried things, they've not been successful, and so we need to dig deeper, or we have a fidelity issue, or a combination of a lot of things. So if our fidelity is acceptable, and now we're looking at outcome data, things the teachers are doing, when we look at the data they give us, pre-post, looks like you learned the information. I'm building your skill. But now, are you using the tools? On that piece of information, I'm showing a lack, right? They're not doing it. So then what do we do? We build additional structures, checks and balances, as the Evansville team said, to support their implementation. All that comes through looking at your data, though. So I want you to, just like you thought about fidelity, plan for what will be your data decision rules for when to adjust based on the things you put on your chart? How will you know if you are, if teachers are using high-yield instructional practices? Or if there is impact from your SDL tools, SDI tools? So I want you to have the conversation about your data decision rules. So in your reflection document, there are these questions, but you can add to them. And what I find is that people then start to merge the fidelity question again after they start to have this conversation. But some of the major questions I want you to consider with your tablemates is, what are you currently using as data rules? It could be zero. It could be none. Just call that out. But if you have some, what are they? And then, based on our conversation, consider if there's opportunities for you to adjust. How are you progress monitoring? Remember, we were making the example, we had the example of if we're working on reading fluency, or if our, we're monitoring, progress monitoring a fluency skill, but actually, we're working on phonics that's misaligned. So are your progress monitoring tools actually aligned to what you want to know? I think, again, if we call back to the Evansville example, they were doing a survey. What's your experience of this session? Great. But what they really wanted to know is, are you implementing the stuff we talked about? But they weren't measuring it at first. They added that as a progress monitoring tool. What strengths do you notice in terms of your data decision-making processes and what opportunities? Questions about what I want you to talk about? Thinking questions, more thinking. Okay, so we'll set the timer. I'm going to set it for 15 minutes. If other thoughts around fidelity come up, add those, because I think these are related. So I'm setting the timer for 15 minutes. Again, capture this in your notes document. Kokomo team, because they was good. So we were talking about data rules. How, how do you feel about your current data rules? Thumbs up if you are, you see those as strengths? Yep. Okay, so I see Bloomington has some thumbs up. Evansville has some thumbs up. Great. What opportunities did you identify? So even if we have strengths, and all of you do, what are some options? What are some things you can strengthen? Yep.
We said two things, you know, like our administrators' data literacy, like being able to really understand like what it means and making sure that they're in like each section pulling out their subgroup data consistently. Like, sometimes you see that they'll pull students with disabilities out separate, and then they'll have the student group as a whole, but never like non-disabled students or three or reduced. And breaking it all in the bigger picture to like really look at what is this data saying? And then also, we have some opportunities to grow. We moved from our student management systems this year. And so just the ease of being able to pull the data that we need has been a challenge that we've had to work through this year. So I think we still have room to improve that.
People still learning the system itself. Oh, building it too? Oh, gosh, okay. Opportunities? Kokomo, what's an opportunity?
We talked about creative opportunities. So we talked about our goals and just really focusing on more skill-based goals and just being more intentional about focusing on that target and that being, you know, or those, more of, just more of the target and helping teachers understand that more of the appropriate goals that were discussed. Drilling down to more of those specific areas and that skill-based goal, so.
Yep. I loved our conversation because it, it really, to me, just shows the journey. Like, sometimes, so as a reminder, Kokomo team is working on RTI system. So it shows the journey. Sometimes you just need people to get comfortable with the problem-solving process itself. So then you're like, check. And then, now it's time for us to advance, meaning turn around, change some other things, to advance the conversation about, okay, you've been problem-solving around Renee and her need for reading intervention, but what is an appropriate skill-based goal for Renee that aligns with grade-level expectations? Because if we set a goal, just any old arbitrary goal, grow Renee, just get better. That might happen, but Renee could still be below grade-level expectations. And we wouldn't know that we needed to be more rigorous or change some component of, of the intervention protocol so that it gets me more frequency or more duration, or I'm working with someone who's an expert in a certain component of reading, whatever it is, right? So it's important to have goals that are aligned to grade-level standards so that when you're making decision about progress, you're, you're focused on the overall target. Because you could be underestimating or maybe even overestimating growth if it's not aligned to grade-level standards. So they're ready. They're ready for it. They are ready. Okay, what's an opportunity for our Bloomington team?
One opportunity that we discussed was creating data rules for a specific, that align with intervention practice. So a data rule for a fluency intervention may look very different than a data rule for a behavioral intervention. It may look different. And so creating data rules that are connected to the intervention rather than a broader domain or content. So like, for example, if you get quick reads, which is like a repeated reading for fluency and targeted fluency vocabulary comprehension, is an evidence-based practice. However, the evidence that suggests it works is in highly-controlled research settings. And so for us to think that we're going to implement that with that fidelity at that level across all of the weeks in which the study suggests it works is, it's not the real world. And so for us to create data rules that are more realistic for real-world application of interventions and being able to, similar to that Evansville of like ensuring that our, our teachers have intervention literacy as well as data literacy to be able to understand that the, there's a voltage drop when you implement something in the real world and that we need to keep going beyond what we would expect to be the time in which we should see growth. And that we can't throw everything out when it just doesn't work after a couple of weeks.
Right.
Because it's just the real world, and there's a lot of actual factors that come into play. So creating data rules that are very practice-oriented.
I love it. Yes. So this, again, is teaching people's skillset. Not just saying, here are the interventions, but what do we need to be thoughtful about as we're implementing these things, right? So when we're looking at data and it doesn't work after three weeks, this intervention doesn't work. Is that the case? Or does it need more time? Again, if we are measuring that progress against a targeted goal, then we can have more accuracy in the decisions that we're making around whether or not we continue it, just hold strong, or if we need to modify something. So I was sharing with the Kokomo team, like something, for example, is you want three or, you know, if you're, if you're progress monitoring weekly, you could say, we need two out of the three progress monitoring data points to be at or above the goal line. That's when we know we need to continue. But if three out of three of those data points are below the goal line, that means do something different. Right? So you need to be that specific. Opportunity for our mixed tables? You want to share? Anything that you feel is added?
We can really do some work on making sure that we're consistent and what our expectations for consistency are in delivering the interventions. Because it's not really fair to monitor progress if we haven't delivered the interventions.
Back to the fidelity part, yep. That's what I was saying. They usually start to merge together. Anything? Guys, good? Okay. I would say, think more about your data points, your decision-making, data decision-making points. Add those to your specific actions and your data collection as you think ahead for next year. One of the things that I want to just mention, because it came up yesterday, one of the teams up north was saying, we have data rules that we expect our teachers to progress monitor twice a month. Great. I mean, okay, that works. What, fine. I wasn't like challenging them on the, on the, on the number because only they know if that is adequate. But I, what I wanted them to consider was the quality of the data that they were collecting. Because they didn't give any criteria for using what. So you can give me a data point, but again, is it aligned to the area of skill that I need support with? The other thing that I shared with the team yesterday is, you've said, give me two data points in a month. And what they were experiencing is that it'd be teachers that like, oh, it's almost the end of the month. And so they like do them back-to-back. That's not helpful. So I was suggesting that maybe a quick adaptation for them moving forward was that they have, just like we have assessment windows for other things, have an assessment window for your first data point to be between the first and the 15th, and then another data point within the 16th and the 30th, or whatever. Like, they could make that decision. But you need to be very specific about the what, the tool that folks are using so you can make sure there's high-quality data being collected. And then that it's comprehensive in terms of the profile of the student over the month time. Okay. Last thing, we're almost there, you all. You're doing great. Last thing I want to chat about is, so this is in your slides, but as you're making decisions, I want you to also think about analyzing things through a lens of... I want you to also think about analyzing things through a lens of equity. And I want you to stick with me about why. So I've used this for other folks going through some kind of compliance thing, or folks that are just implementing MTSS. This is a way to track the results of intervention. I'm not suggesting you have to have something that looks like this. I just want you to take away the point I'm trying to make. So here, what this kind of tool allows you to do is look at the overall efficacy of what it is you're trying to do. So if I'm asking myself, what's the overall efficacy of our MTSS problem teams? I got to track that. So what is the indicator that a student is responding to our MTSS intervention? It would be that they're on track to meet their goal. Remember the goal line I just said? If they're on track to meet the goal, they're responding to the intervention. So here, this is an example of how I'm looking at who's responding. Because remember, equity is doing what students need, not in the same way, but our question about equity is, are we closing gaps? And is what we're doing benefiting all groups equally? So here I have by subgroup, I have free and reduced lunch, English language learners, special ed students. So in my school, there are 200 students that over, where right now are receiving response to intervention. The number, so I have the number of those 200 students broken down by their subgroup and the number of students responding. I know they're responding if they're on track with the goal line for their individual goal. What I also am capturing is, of those 200 students, how many get referred for evaluation? And then of those that get referred for evaluation, how many actually qualify? So when you're looking at data in that way, you can have a nice sophisticated chart that then populates the numbers for you. I have 59 out of the 200 students responding to the intervention, meaning they're on track to meet their goal. Is that what we would want? That would be a negative. You want that to be much higher. We can have all the problem-solving teams established, but if they're not helping students to meet their goal, problem. But you have to track that in aggregate, big picture. If you're just looking at an isolated student, only you're missing that big picture. So you want to track at the system level, too. And then even by student and subgroup, you want to see how many are participating and the percent responding. You want to see alignment there. You want to see these percentages be about equal. So for example, our African-American students, 32% of the 200 participating are African-American. 33.9 of those students are responding. They're on target to meet their goal. That's a great thing. That's what we would expect. When we look at our free and reduced lunch students, 80% of the 200 are free and reduced lunch students. 61% are responding. So might we need to shift some things for those students? Is it that we have a particular time where we do interventions that are after school or before school, where there's something about the nature of that population that they can't access it? We don't know. There's more questions to ask, but this data helps us know we need to dig deeper. In our MTSS process, there are zero special education students participating. I bet you that is very likely and very common, probably, what you experience. But you could ask some questions about that. Why? Why is it? Why are we saying there's no room for special education students in MTSS? What's the purpose of MTSS? That, those are questions that need answers from you. But it's not my philosophy. And I don't think it's the intention of MTSS as a framework that only gen ed students can access that. It's how we do school. When we notice an issue, we respond to it using data. Anybody can access that. So why do we have some groups of students that can't access that? Questions that need answers. And then here, 15% of the students, those 200 students, get referred for a full evaluation. And of those students, 76 of them qualify. Is that what you'd want to see? You want to see, of those that are referred, would you want to see them qualify? If they have moved through what you deem to be an effective MTSS process, which maybe we need to question. But let's just say this number was 92%, which indicates a highly-successful process. And of those students, 15, we only refer 15%. And of those 50%, 15%, 76 qualified. Is that a thumbs up or a thumbs down? If you saw that data, or in the middle, okay. I mean, it's not terrible. If it were 20%, we'd be like, whoa. You're not referring the right folks. I would love an 85, 90, 95 as a school psychologist. Please, give me the just-right ones. It's not terrible. Is there an opportunity to strengthen that? Yep. And so we want to know, well, who's not qualifying? Like, is it a particular skill? Is it math? Is it behavior? So you just don't have high-quality behavior issues? But, and so you think they're ED, but they're really not? Like, what is it, right? You can have those conversations. But only if you look at the big picture of the data. So whether this is, I mean, this is a concrete example, example for MTSS, but it could be about your inclusionary practices. It could be about any skills that you're trying to have teachers implement. Let's say you're trying to build their skill set. You can break this down instead of saying by ethnicity. You could do it by grade level of teachers I'm talking about. So this kind of process can be applied to both system level and student level. And I'm suggesting that you want to be intentional about looking at this aggregate level so you can make decisions about the efficacy of your overall interventions, not just at the student level. We got that? Okay. So wrapping up, what are your thoughts on this image? I want you to take a minute to talk to your tablemates about this image. And based on all of our conversation over all three sessions, what does this mean to you? Specifically about addressing your area of focus? All right, who can share a thought about the image? What does it represent for you and this work? Yep. Nobody's looking at the root cause. Yeah, and he's going to sit down and sink. He's going to sit down and sink. So he's busy bailing the water, just trying to get all the kids out of the water, right? He's just trying to fix, 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 fix. Instead of going upstream and identifying what is causing this to begin with. Now, both techniques are needed, right? If the water is super high, you got to get some of it out. But ultimately, you have to fix this leak, or else you are going to run out of steam. So when we talk about burnout and overwhelm, it just is a reminder to question, are we bailing water? Are we firefighting? Or are we going upstream to think about how to prevent issues in the first place? So I want you to really have this in mind as you finish up the day. It's important to do both. Get water out of the boat while also finding the source of the leak. And so the rest of the day, I want you to just connect the dots in a way that's meaningful for you and your team. By now, you should have clarity, more clarity on actions, resources, data that you need to collect aligned with your outcome goal. So I want you to think about the very specific actions that you'll need to take to get the water out of the boat and fix the leak, systems and student outcomes. And then because we've talked so much about data and fidelity, I want you to be thinking about what benchmarks are going to use to help you determine whether or not you're on track, whether or not what you're doing is effective. How are you going to monitor the fidelity of the actions that you design? And I would say, always be thinking about the mindset, skill set, and tool sets that are needed from both leaders and staff. These are the people right now that are going to be bailing water. So what do you need to teach them in order to help them think upstream? So that opens, that gives you an opportunity to kind of pop in wherever you feel is best related to where you and your team are. So I'm not going to dictate a specific entry point for you, but what I want you to consider, I want you to just stop and go back to your outcome goals and think about the question, actions, benchmarking, fidelity. Are we capturing comprehensively student-level and system-level goals? What are your opportunities to elevate, to strengthen your plan as you consider what you'll do for next year? So I want you to have that conversation as a team. And my only request is that by the end of our time, you be able to report out one action that your team is going to commit to as a result of your reflections, right? So how much time do you, would you like? I was thinking like 20 minutes. And then we'll check in. And if some teams are done, that would be great. And you can stay and do whatever you'd like to do, or you can leave. Or if we find we need more time, then we just take more time. How does 20 minutes start sound? Good? All right, we'll start there. And don't rush, because we're supposed to be here, to be here until 3:00 anyway. And this is for the good of your system. So let's just do it the way that it needs to be done. All right, 20 minutes. I hope that you have come to think about that one action that you're going to take to strengthen your plan, connecting all the dots. I would just say, give yourself some grace, because this is hard work. Just how we started our day, this is hard change. So just small incremental changes is what you want to focus on so people don't have the reaction of, oh, got to change something else. The best thing you can, one of the other best things you can do is have really good, clearly identified ways that you're going to monitor the efficacy of what you're doing. How are you going to ensure fidelity? All those things are important. So thank you for your time. I would say, don't forget to give us feedback. You have gone through all three cycles, so we're interested in seeing if they met your needs or if you, if there's something that we could have done differently and we can plan for in the future. So please, I know they'll send this out, but please take some time to fill that evaluation out for us. So again, thank you for your time and good luck to you.